I'm going to call the order of meeting of June 20th, 2019, and I'm going to ask the Assistant Town Administrator, Diane, to read the agenda.
Good evening. So tonight I'll read the agenda and the board can vote to amend it or approve the agenda. There was no sign of a public comment tonight.
Speaker, please.
So our first order of business will be the consent agenda, which has a payroll warrant in minutes of March 28th and May 9th, and meeting dates of July 11th, which will be our open meeting law seminar and year-end transfers with our revisory committee, and then August 1st and August 15th, meeting dates. Melanson Heath, Zach Ventross is here. He's going to review the annual financial statements for the year ending June 30th, 2018. And then we have a posted dog hearing. The chair will read the hearing posting. Then we have consideration of annual appointments to various boards and committees. Then we have a library borrowing update that Heidi Doyle will present to us. And under routine business, there is a finance director report and a reserve fund transfer request for the fire department. I'm going to ask the board to consider removing the town administrators' report, the update on the sustainability coordinate, as we are still crafting the job description and hopefully be able to bring it back for the August 1st selectmen's meeting. Then we'll go into an executive session under Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town and the chair so declares for the library. Thank you.
So I approve with the town administrator report item removed.
All those in favor? Great. So I'll take a, on the consent agenda, I just want to talk about one of the meeting dates before we vote on it. On July 11th, we have this open meeting law seminar. And Diane, how long did you say they're saying they need?
He said an hour and a half that he was going to need.
And they can't shorten it?
To do it properly, he said, so that it would be, to do it properly, he said, they need an hour and a half.
And what are we doing? Are we going to do the advisory stuff first?
Right after that.
Or, oh, we're doing that first?
No, we're going to do the open meeting law seminar first.
Okay.
And that way, all the boards and committees can just go home if they would like, so it's not too late. Because I invited-
My question to the board is, can we start this meeting at 6:00? Because that's going to, because it's going to be a late night if we don't with an hour and a half start. Would that work for you, Diane?
That works for me.
Diane, is that, okay?
Yeah, I'll just notify Janelle at KP Law that we're going to start at 6:00.
Does that work for you guys?
And notify the other committee, because it's a joint meeting with advisory, so-
Right.
I'll have to-
Yeah, I can let-
I don't know whether they're coming to open meeting law or not.
They were invited, so I have to note, I have to notify everybody again that the meetings would have started at 6:00.
But I think that would be smart, right, to try to get it started earlier?
I think so.
Does that work for you, Eric?
It should work.
Sorry, I just don't want to be here until 11 o'clock.
We're going to do it to be a disorder. I mean, if we did the financial things first and then have the-
Yeah. Either way, I think we should start early if it works for everybody on the board.
Okay. You're comfortable with you 6:30 instead of us 6:00? You sure? Take a half day.
All right. So with the change of start time-
6 o'clock.
I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Well, I don't want the consent agenda to change. Go ahead, Paul.
Go ahead, Paul, the fervor.
The second, the May 9th meeting, there's a typo in the next-to-last line.
Yes, I fixed that.
Oh, not in the bracket that I have.
Oh, I fixed it on mine. I didn't re-pick them all up, everybody. I put that Y in there where it says May.
Yep.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
Wait. Go ahead, Paul, sorry.
My question was on the town administrator payroll thing. What I got was something that was unsigned across the board.
Well, do you have the payroll signed? It's in front of, it's in front of-
Oh, the one I have?
The one I have signed.
It's been signed by Sharon.
Sharon signed this, this one, but David did not sign it.
He's playing with the timesheet.
Yeah, the timesheet's not signed by David.
That's done electronically, so none of them are signed.
Oh, they're not signed?
Yeah. We do them all electronically, enter them into a payroll system, VADA system, electronically.
Well, it's just disconcerting, because it says created by, no results returned. Then it says no signatures on any of these things.
If they're not signing them, they shouldn't have signature lines on them.
Okay.
If they're signing them electronically, that's fine.
Okay.
And is there something in the submission that indicates that the individual submitting it has approved?
Everybody submits their payroll.
Right. Maybe it's the ownership of the information that-
Yeah, I didn't know where, I thought he was out, so I don't know where this came from. It sounded, I felt like was somebody trying to reconstruct what was going on here? Otherwise, why wouldn't he have, or would the employee have put his name on it?
He submits his own timesheet, right. And it goes up to the payroll department. And then it comes, then it comes here. Sharon signs off on it, and then it comes here.
Again, I'm not questioning, I just think for the purposes of paperwork, when things come before the board, when you have something that says created by, no results returned, and then have no names on it at all, it just needs something in the records of the town to indicate that there's some ownership by somebody of these things.
So going forward, we could have David sign.
Or at least say submitted by Dave Williams.
Or if there's somewhere, just up them, and it doesn't need to be-
Okay.
Going forward somewhere, some indication that it's signed off by him.
Okay.
All right. If that's it, then I'll take a motion to approve the-
Consent agenda.
So move.
Scouter.
All those in favor? Excellent. So next on our agenda, it's Melanson Heath.
Does everybody have copies? I brought that.
Mine.
I do.
Well, I put them inside the book, too.
I have mine at home. Thanks. Make sure.
Garrett, that's one. We have a nice town copy?
Yeah. I'm good. You gave me two. It was two weeks ago or three weeks ago.
Yeah, and I also put a copy in your book.
Melanson or Mel- Melanson?
Melanson.
Thank you.
Please, Jim.
No, this is just Melanson.
Sorry, I don't have the official pen.
Not just.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, sorry.
So my name is Zach Ventross. I'm with Melanson Heath, and I was the audit manager in charge of the June 30, 2018 audit for the town of Sherborne. Tonight, I'm going to go through the financial statements. I'm going to highlight some areas that I want to bring to your attention. I'll go over a bit of trends comparing 2017 to 2018, and then I'll go through the management letter. And if anybody has any questions, please feel free to stop me, and we can certainly go over them at that point in time. If I could, I want to kind of start with a good theme. So I think that the theme that you should take away from the financial statement presentation is that the town is in good financial position. You have a strong unassigned fund balance. You have a well-funded Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund comparative to other communities. So again, I think the theme that they take away from this portion of the presentation should be that the town of Sherborne is in a strong financial, good financial position. If I could, I'd like to have you turn to the first page after the table of contents. And this is the independent auditor's report. This is essentially what the town of Sherborne hired us to produce. The town received a clean opinion. There were no exceptions, and that is the best opinion you can receive from an independent auditing firm. And that's the same opinion that the town of Sherborne has received in the past. Next, I'd like to have you turn to page 3, which is the first page of the Management's Discussion and Analysis. And the Management's Discussion and Analysis takes place on pages 3 through 9. And in this section of the financial statements, there would be discussion about trends and any major financial areas would be discussed in here. Instead of sitting here and simply reading this to you, I'd actually like to jump to page 10, which is the Statement of Net Position. And we'll discuss the same things on page 10 and some of the other pages that are discussed here in the Management's Discussion and Analysis. So on page 10 is your Statement of Net Position. And as you can see, there's just one column with your governmental activities. So essentially, all the town's funds are consolidated into one column presentation. So that includes your general fund, your stabilization fund, your special revenue fund, your capital project funds, your trust funds, your permanent funds, and then the long-term assets and the long-term liabilities are added. And I'm going to focus more on the long-term assets and the long-term liabilities on this page. About a third of the way down the page, under Assets, is Landing Construction in Progress. And that has a balance of $14,948,000, which is about a $3 million increase from the prior year. That increase is primarily due to the work that the town has been doing on the library construction project. So that just represents the amount of additions and work that the town has done. That's what that increase is primarily comprised of. Right below it is your other capital assets, net of accumulated depreciation, and that has a balance of $17,638,000. It's about a $594,000 increase from the prior year. And just to kind of let you know, some of the additions that the town made to their capital assets in the year, the town spent $691,000 on road improvements. They spent $326,000 on various new vehicles. And it was about $1.6 million in depreciation expense for June 30, 2018. The next line item I'd like to bring to your attention is Notes Payable. It's under liabilities. It's about halfway down on the current liabilities, and has a balance of $85,000. This is about a $1.9 million decrease from June 30, 2017. And that decrease is primarily related to an increase a little bit below. So under non-current liabilities, there's Bonds Payable, net of current portions. The first line under non-current, now has a balance of $6,467,000. This is about a $2.6 million increase in the prior year. So the notes payable last year, that was short-term debt that the town had on your bond anticipatory notes. In 2018, the town went out and did a long-term bonding. So really, just took that liability from a current liability, and when you went permanently bonded, it moved it down into that bonds payable, non-current portion. Something that is very positive is in what bond rating agencies view very favorably, is that any time a community can have 75% of their debt payments being paid over the next 10 years, they view that very favorably. And 88% of the town of Sherborne's debt payments will be paid over the next 10 years. So the town, your bond rating agencies will be viewing that very favorably to show that the town is going to be paying off their debt, the 88% of their debt over the next 10 years. The next line item I'd like to bring to your attention is Net Pension Liability. It's actually right below that Bonds Payable line item.
Can I interrupt you and ask a question on that last point?
Sure.
If you mind?
Not at all.
So, you know, we try to structure the bond payments to the life of the asset. So part of it is, we've been buying, you know, vehicles that maybe are a 10-year life or less. You know, the library and some other long-term assets will probably be written off over a much longer period of time. So it seems like the bonding will be reflected. In other words, the bonding life seems like it reflects the asset which was used to acquire that asset.
Okay.
So the problem, you know, it seems like the strategy's a good one, because you want near-term repayment, but you want to have the bonding reflect the citizens of town who are going to benefit from that asset over the life of the time.
Certainly.
So that's why we don't always want to bond longer, short-term, I think, for some of the longer-term assets.
Okay.
So I don't know if there's a position on that, or what's your-
Not that I'm aware of. I do, all I know is that the bond rating agencies, if you read the bond rating reports, they do specify that they like to see 75% for AAA communities, which the town of Sherborne is, to be paying off that debt, you know, within, 75% within 10 years.
I think it's the nature of the assets. So what do we spend money on?
Exactly.
Roads and vehicles. And those all have those lifespans. So sewer can actually be bonded up to 30 years. Water can be bonded up to 40 years. So think about that, water-
Well, we did the fire trucks, which were 30 years old that we replaced. We did them for 20 years, I believe.
Yep.
But the ones they replaced were 30 years old.
I'm assuming the bond for the library will be a 30-year bond. I'm not sure, you know what I mean?
That's what I would assume.
Maybe because of incentive for a short term, because the interest is so low right now. The rates are still crazy low on these 30-year bonds.
I assume the 30-year would probably be what you would do, right, Heidi?
20 to 30.
I was going to say, the useful life is probably 20 years, not 30. I mean, isn't typically based on what the projected useful life is?
Yes, I think so.
A building is often 30, though.
Yeah. Building's just not a fire truck.
It's the nature of our infrastructure. So roads and cars, vehicles have the least. You know what I mean? But if you had like water sewer infrastructure, then it actually has much longer lifespans. And it's tempting to bond them as much as 40.
Yes. All right, sorry to interrupt.
There's no need to apologize. You ready for me to continue?
Okay.
The next line item I want to bring to your attention is Net Pension Liability. Again, that's under the non-current liabilities. Now, it's a balance of $10,500,000. It's about a $236,000 decrease from the prior year. And what factors into that decrease is really three items. Let me first take a step back. This represents the town's portion of the Middlesex Contributory Retirement System's total unfunded liability. And that total unfunded liability for the entire system is $1.4 billion. The town's portion of that is 0.74%. So 7.74% of that $1.4 billion is $10,500,000, which is what's shown on the town of Sherborne's financial statements. To make you aware that the Middlesex Contributory Retirement System is 49% funded, which is low in the Commonwealth. What we see as an average in the Commonwealth is between 65 and 70% funded. So again, the Middlesex is on the lower side of that funding, you know, as of June 30, 2018. The reason for the decrease in that liability is really threefold. And the first is, is that the retirement system saw positive operating results with their investments in 2017. The system actually earned $98 million more than what they had anticipated. And the town, in the town of Sherborne's benefit of that system's $98 million that they expected, was about $724,000. So the town's liability decreased by about $724,000 due to those positive operating results with their investments over the course of 2017. On the opposite end, the system made a change in assumption. They changed their discount rate from 7.75 to 7.5. And that change in that assumption, that decrease in the discount rate, actually led to an increase of the liability of about $719,000. So the change in the assumption compared with the investment results kind of offset each other to a net zero, essentially. Now, the third factor is the proportion. I had stated before that of that total unfunded liability, the town of Sherborne's portion was 0.74%. In 2017, it was 0.76%. So that change of 0.76 to 0.74 really led to about that $236,000 decrease that you saw in this liability for your June 30, 2018 figure. The next item I wanted to bring to your attention is actually right below Net Pension Liability. It's the Net OPEB Liability. OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. And that has a balance of $6,946,000. This is about a $4.2 million increase from the prior year. This is the big change in your financial statements from 2017 to 2018, and that's due to the implementation of the Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 75. Every municipality across the country had to implement this statement in standard, and it replaces Statement Number 45. And Statement 45 said that this liability would be recognized over a 30-year period. And the town's about halfway through that recognition of that, of about 15 years or so of that recognition period. Statement 75 says, there's no longer going to be a recognition period. This liability will be recognized in full in 2018. And again, every municipality across the country had to implement this. Your users of the financial statements of bond rating agencies aren't going to be surprised or shocked to see this. They expected it. They knew it was coming. Essentially, this full liability was presented on one of the last pages of the financial statements, and they took it from essentially page 55, page 56, and brought it up here to page 10.
Let me ask you a question. The money that we've invested in our OPEB funds, those are under the investments in the-
They are not. So the, your OPEB trust fund is actually going to be on page 17.
I see. But where is it on the balance sheet, though?
It's on page 17. So that's a fiduciary fund. So your fiduciary funds are not included on page 10.
They're not included as an asset of the town.
They are, but on page 17, not on page 10.
Oh, I thought this was a summary of our full balance sheet.
It does not include your fiduciary funds. So your fiduciary funds are your other post-employment benefits trust fund and your agency funds, which are all on page 17. So they're not included on page 10. That's the only items that aren't included on page 10. Everything else would be included on page 10.
That seems odd not to have on the balance sheet.
That's what I was thinking. Like-
It is odd, but that's the way that-
I think everything would be-
That's how it's presented for everybody across America. Your fiduciary funds are not presented as governmental activities, because it's just, you know, the way that the presentation, they've required that presentation to be shown.
Makes no sense.
Sorry.
Thanks.
You're welcome. So on the bright side, you do have a liability of, you know, $6,946,000. But the town is in a really good position, because you funded it at 14.4%. If we actually jumped to the last page of the financial statements, I think it shows a good representation of this liability. So on the last page of the financial statements-
What page is that?
Page 56.
56.
Right at the top there, you can see your total other post-employment benefits liability. And in 2018, it had a balance of $8,072,000. But the town had put aside $1,163,000, which leads to a total unfunded liability of $6,000, or $6,909,000.
Now it makes sense to me. You're netting out the liability.
Yes.
You're not, so it's not an accidental liability. It's just a netted-out liability.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So it makes more sense now.
When you said it, going in on the balance sheet, that-
Yeah.
Yeah, I have to be in there.
Agreed.
So the funding percentage is at 14.4%. Now, what we see as an average in the Commonwealth is anywhere between 0 and 10% for towns. Now, obviously, there are exceptions, but the town of Sherborne is as at 14.4%. So in comparison to other municipalities in the Commonwealth, you're ahead of the game. And this is what the bond rating agencies really like to see, is the consistent funding of that liability. And the town has historically put aside about $200,000 for the past few years, and it's my understanding that they will continue to be putting aside funds on an annual basis to fund this liability. The bond rating agencies, it's a hot topic for them right now. So the town of Sherborne will be, you know, in a good financial position, and it'll be viewed very favorably by your bond rating agency. If I could have you turn to page 12. This is your governmental funds balance sheet. This is essentially the same information on page 10, but it does not include any long-term assets, and it does not include any long-term liabilities. And it's also broken out to provide a bit more detail. Your first column is your general fund. Included in that column is not only your general fund, but your stabilization funds. Your stabilization funds are also included in that column. Next, you have your two major funds, which is the library construction and the road improvements. And then finally, you have your non-major governmental funds, which is a consolidation of your grants, your capital projects, your trust funds, your revolving funds, all consolidated into the non-major governmental funds. I'd like to focus our attention on that very first column, that general fund column. And the first item I'd like to bring to your attention is three down from the top. It is property taxes, and it has a balance of $533,000. The majority of this balance is either made up of leaned items, or items that are less than one, or receivables that are less than one year old. And so this shows that the town does a really good job of leaning their taxes in a timely manner, and protecting the town's assets to ensure payment at some point in time in the future, which again, is a strong position for the town to be in, and will be viewed favorably, again, by your bond rating agencies. The last item I want to bring to your attention on this page is actually three numbers from the bottom, is your unassigned fund balance. And that has a balance of $3,64,000. This is one of the more important figures in your financial statements. This is essentially the starting point for your free cash calculation. And what the bond rating agencies like to see is that when you compare this unassigned fund balance to your budgeted expenditures for the current year, they like to see that percentage between 10 and 15%. As of June 30, 2018, that percentage was at 10.6%. So the town of Sherborne, again, has a strong, healthy unassigned fund balance that, again, will be viewed very favorably by your bond rating agencies.
Sorry to interrupt. This is actually the thing I was most confused about in the report. Can you, I just have trouble with, what's the difference between committed, assigned, and unassigned, those categories?
It might be, if you jump to page 35. Page 34 does a, provides an explanation for what each are, but page 35, you can probably see it a bit more. So when you're committed, you have your Article Carryforwards, as well as your Special Education Stabilization Fund. Assigned are going to be your encumbrances, as well as any reserve for expenditures. And your reserve for expenditures of what the town has voted to use for free cash for the next fiscal year. And then there's reserve for the MSBA debt paydowns, and then a small other. And then in the unassigned, it's going to be your general fund, unassigned fund balance, and then your general stabilization fund balance.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. So if we can turn to page 16, I'd like to get into the budget versus actual for the town of Sherborne. On page 16 shows the general fund budget versus actual for the year. There's four columns. You have your original budget, your final budget, your actual revenues and actual expenditures, and then either favorable or unfavorable variance in that far-right column. And I'd like to focus our attention on that far-right column. About halfway down the page is your total revenues and other sources, and that has a balance of $333,000. This represents the amount of revenues that came in greater than what was anticipated. So essentially, the town of Sherborne beat the budget, but on the revenue side, by $333,000, excuse me. Likewise, the second number from the bottom is total expenditures and other uses. And that has a balance of $552,000. This represents the amount of expenditures that came in less than what the town anticipated. So in total, that last number on that far-right side, that $885,000, that represents the favorable turnbacks in operating results that the town had when comparing the final budget to the actual. Again, which is very favorable in what the bond rating agencies like to see. Now, on the, you know, maybe a bit more of, on the opposite side of the equation, maybe a bit of a negative here, is your use of fund balance. It's under revenues and other sources. It's three numbers from the bottom under that section. The town used $1,692,000 in their budget for June 30, 2018, fiscal year 2018. What the bond rating agencies like to see, that if you're going to be using fund balance, I'd like to see it be replenished with your favorable turnbacks on your budget versus actual. So the town used about approximately $1.7 million, but only had turnbacks of about $800, or $900,000. So there was a difference of about $800,000 when comparing the use of fund balance to what was replenished into that fund balance. Now, on the bright side, they like to see, if you're going to be using fund balance, they like to see it to be used for one-time capital items. And the majority of that $1.7 million was used for one-time capital items. So they will view that favorably for the town of Sherborne. And that concludes what I wanted to bring to your attention on the financial statements. Again, I think the takeaway is that the town of Sherborne's in a strong financial position. You have a strong unassigned fund balance, and you have a well-funded OPEB trust fund comparative to other communities in the Commonwealth.
Can I ask you a quick, this may be, the page 16, the variances. A lot of them, I understand where they came from. The one that jumped out at me a little bit was debt service of $100,000. Is that basically that interest rates were lower than we thought they were going to be? You think that that would be something that we could project what the debt service would be pretty hard and fast?
Can you provide any insight on that one? Should I, I can't specifically say what that-
I think we borrowed less money for the library. See, when we budget debt service, we include what we think will be incurring in debt.
This was in 2018, so I think that's-
Yeah, but it's still the library.
And I think what happened back then, correct me if I'm wrong, Heidi, was we left, we didn't go long-term on the bonds yet during this. And so we had, we were still playing short-term rates when we thought we were going to-
Well, we had quoted money to go for a bond, long-term bond, and the project wasn't there. It didn't happen. And we had to project this back almost a year in advance. And it's about $70,000, $75,000 to go for a long-term bond. We can get it in Freedom Camp, but we couldn't guarantee that amount, so we couldn't have budgeted. And we wasn't spent because we went short.
Got it. Thank you.
I think, I don't think it was because short versus long-term. It was because we didn't need the money.
Didn't go to the bond, right.
We didn't, we didn't incur the library costs as quickly as we thought, so we didn't have to bond as much as we thought.
Yeah.
I mean, it was a bad news story, because we wanted the library to move faster, but that was why. Same thing happened this year, too.
Yeah, we bonded 3.3.
Yeah. And we were anticipating originally bonding more money, so the debt service would have been higher if the library schedule had been closer to the original intent.
Well, there was another one with, I think with one of the fire trucks, too, that we bonded that later than we thought we were going to as well.
Yes.
Which may have been in the 2018 fiscal year, because this is, you know, we're a year later now. So we've got to remember back what happened in that fiscal year.
Yep.
I can't tell you that there was a fire truck in that bonding for $700,000.
There was in that house. There was. Engine one.
Are we good to move on to the management line, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I think so. Yeah.
Okay.
Unless anybody else had any other questions.
Well, just a comment about expectations. My expectation had been under public safety that we would have had, we would be in a deficit situation, because we're always looking at adding overtime and picking up expenses beyond what was budgeted. But here, this says that we actually underspent what was expected, and we saved $100,000. My expectation was different, and I'm surprised. So I'm wondering whether things like overtime adjustments and the rest are not included in these line items, because they weren't- in these line items because they weren't in either the original budget or the final budget, but were done by these, like, year-end transfers and things like that.
I think it's an even more basic issue, which is a lot of that overtime, these detail work gets put into the CM and D budget. It's not in, so I'm assuming it's in the public works line.
Ah.
And it's, it's a lot of money.
And I think in fiscal year eighteen was the first year that we actually budgeted for the overtime.
We did, we put it, we forced police overtime to be in the budget, though. In the past, we used to, you, you, year-end reserve fund transfer in July or late June.
Whereas, a few years ago, we did, so it's probably, this was the first year that we actually budgeted for the police overtime.
Correct.
Okay. But I think going forward, it is a good point, which is, I just fundamentally, I want each budget maker to be responsible for his or her budget. This is a cost that is incurred and doesn't fall within the department that is incurring the cost. So, I mean, that has, that has more control over the budgeting, so.
Yeah, there's some categories that are hard. For example, we, this year, we did the opposite with the fuel bill. We used to split up the fuel oil costs that vehicles use in everybody, the department, but it was just cumbersome. So we left that within CM and D.
Moved all the budget money.
And we don't backcharge the police department for the gas, and we fill the cars with fuel.
I'm sorry, I know I'm raising a budgeting and accounting detail, but...
Yeah, but, so there's some multiple ways it's handled, but I get you for one. Because actually, the elections budget has police overtime in it, too, for the officer that sits at the polling place every year, too.
All right. Any other questions before he moves on to the management letter? Go ahead.
So, before we begin, I, again, I want to come over with, I'd like to issue a theme on the reports. I think the theme to take away from the management letter is that there are improvements that should be made, and need to be made here in the town, and that should be the takeaway. So first, I'll explain the management letter and kind of walk you guys through it, and then we'll move from there. So in addition to looking at the balances in the financial statements and improving out those balances, we also look at the town's internal controls to make sure that the assets are being appropriately safeguarded. If we were to see areas where we thought, where we think improvements could be made, we recommend them here in the management letter. And if they were serious enough, we would either classify them as a significant deficiency or a material weakness. And in June thirty, two thousand and eighteen, the town did have two material weaknesses. And to give you a definition of what a material weakness is, a material weakness is a deficiency or combination of deficiencies in internal control such that there is a reasonable possibility that a material misstatement in the entity's financial statements will not be prevented or detected and corrected on a timely basis. So I wanted to let you know that approximately five percent of Melanson Heath's clients have a material weakness on a given year. And typically, these are due to turnover, or change in accounting systems, or softwares, and generally, they don't get repeated, and they're resolved in the next fiscal year. So there, of the two material weaknesses, the first one would be cash reconciliation, and I'll get into that in a moment, but that's been a material weakness in the town's management letter in two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, and two thousand and eighteen. Likewise, we have a material weakness this year for the improvement of the general ledger, and that's been a material weakness in two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and fifteen. It was included in the town's management letter in two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and sixteen, but it was just included there as a comment in recommendation. The town this year did have a new treasurer, Heidi Doyle, who started, so there was some turnover, and they did have a computer conversion. They moved from the Softwrite to Vadar, so there was a conversion, which led to some of the problems that we'll be discussing in some of the future pages. But on the bright side, I want to say that both Heidi and Sharon have very positive attitudes. They're both very willing to learn, they're both very teachable, and they're going to training and taking classes to try to improve. They're both reaching out to me on a consistent basis, asking questions, and trying to make improvements. And they have made improvements. It's neither had experience in municipal accounting or municipal work prior to coming to their current positions, so there's going to be a bit of a transition period, and I feel confident that both of them will be able to work towards making the improvements that are necessary to remove these comments in the future from the management letter. First, I'd like to have you turn to page three. And this is where our prior issues begin. So there were five items in the prior year management letter. They'll be discussed about first, and then there's a sixth recommendation, and that's the current year recommendation. The first one is to improve the cash reconciliation procedures, and as I mentioned, this is a material weakness. So cash reconciliations weren't being performed timely, and the town wasn't including all of the bank accounts and the general ledger funds in that reconciliation. We're recommending that the town adjust their reconciliation procedures, and I've sat down with both Sharon and Heidi to go over this, and they've already begun to make some improvements to make sure that they're including all bank accounts and all general fund, or general ledger cash items in that reconciliation, and to begin doing them a bit more timely. But if you turn the page to page four, is the second recommendation, and that's to improve the condition of the general ledger, and again, this is a material weakness. So in the prior year, we had six recommendations in this, in this item. The town was actually able to resolve four of them, so I'd like to commend the town for taking our recommendations seriously and resolving four of those recommendations that we gave in the prior year on this. The two that were not resolved was the posting of one-sided journal entries. This increases the risk of the town's general ledger becoming out of balance, so it's important to not record one-sided journal entries in the general ledger. The town is also not reconciling their tax title receivable accounts to any supporting documentation. So again, the town had six recommendations the prior year, were able to resolve four of them, but there were five new ones that we wanted to add into this particular comment. And they are the postings of revenues and expenses directly to fund balance. Receivable accounts did not reconcile to the deferred revenue in overlay accounts. Entries were recorded backwards. The budgeted revenue was not included in the general ledger, and then the tax revenues were posted to the incorrect revenue accounts. Moving on to page five. About halfway down the page is our third recommendation from the prior year, and is to improve oversight over the library trust funds. The town resolved this one in fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, so they did a fantastic job of, again, taking our recommendation, making improvements, and ensuring that this wasn't going to be repeated in this year's management letter. At the bottom of page five is our fourth recommendation from the prior year, and that's to improve the tax recap form preparation and the budget process. This item was partially resolved, so the town was able to resolve the issues with the tax recap. However, we did identify errors in the town's recording of the budgeted transfers. So we're simply recommending here that the town ensure that all budgeted transfers voted on at the annual town meeting are recorded correctly in the town's general ledger. Turn the page to page six. About halfway down the page is the requirement for dual signatures. So we're simply here recommending that both the preparer and the viewer of the tax reconciliations, excuse me, the cash reconciliations and the posting of journal entries be documented formally by both the preparer and the viewer, preparer and reviewer, and this will provide a more detailed audit trail and help ensure proper segregations of duties. And then finally, on page seven, is our recommendation for the current year, and that is to record bond anticipatory note paydowns. So the town correctly budgeted for bond anticipatory note paydowns in the general fund. However, they weren't recorded properly in the general ledger, and this caused the general fund to be overstated, and then the capital project funds to be, excuse me, it caused the general fund to be understated and the capital project funds to be overstated. We did record an audit adjustment to correct that balance, but our recommendation is to ensure that any time that there are bond anticipatory notes paydowns, that they're recorded correctly in the general ledger. So again, in summation, there were some weaknesses in the town's internal controls, but again, I feel strongly in saying that both Sharon and Heidi are working towards resolving these recommendations, and that they will be able to do so here in the future.
One quick comment, the, go ahead, please. The accounting for library trust funds, I wanted to commend Heidi Doyle, and Jim Murphy, and Hank Roush, and the library trustees. It was a complicated issue, and a lot of time and effort went into it, so kudos to two different elected town boards resolving the issue. There's a very complicated state statute. A lot of folks in Sherborne are very generous in donating funds to the library, and the accounting issues are complicated, so kudos to Heidi, Hank, the library trustees, and Jim Murphy. And you're sitting here, Mary, so I'll include you, too.
Sharon also played quite a bit of role in helping to resolve this as well.
Thank you.
So, since these were from two thousand and eighteen, and both of you now have like another year under your belt, I assume a lot of these things have been resolved in two thousand and nineteen?
Work in progress.
Okay.
We just got the report.
Right.
No, no, a lot of this stuff I've been working on. I mean, transitioning from Softwrite to Vadar was very tough, and it's a real small little team that we have, but we, we've made a lot of improvements, definitely. And, you know, I reach out to Zach all the time. Like you said, I'm going to training classes, and I feel much more confident.
Any other questions, comments from the board? No?
If it was okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make one last statement.
Please.
The audit process is never an easy process. We come in here, and we basically shut the town down, and Sharon's not getting any work done, and her staff's not getting any work done for the week, or weeks that we're here. So I want to thank them for being very easy to work with, and being very pleasant to work with each and every day. When we come in, Sharon has, you know, munchkins and coffee ready for us, so we're very appreciative of her kindness during the audit process. It really makes the whole process go like, you know...
Sharon, that's the opposite. When the auditors come to our company, we turn off the air conditioning so they leave sooner.
It took them a few days to get an internet.
Trust me, I think they're doing that.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for having me. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right. You said the dangerous dog hearing isn't until eight o'clock, correct?
It is, but it isn't until eight o'clock. Uh, Kenny's here, if you want to do the reserve fund transfer front.
Well, yeah, I was going to also say, we could, yeah, we could do that, so then Aaron can, why don't we move to that, the reserve fund transfer? And then we can talk about the library borrowing. So this is under, just, let us get, under number six. Chief Kenny?
So, I did the reserve fund transfer request for two items. The most important, or the obvious one, is the preparing maintenance for the Quint, the aerial ladder on Quint One. I incurred this expense early on in the budget, so I attempted to manipulate the budget throughout the course of the year to, you know, not use other lines or other things to take care of it, and just over the course of the year, you know, I wasn't able to do that as effectively as I had tried. You know, the maintenance budget, we're, we're over significantly this year, and part of that was the aerial service, which I wasn't anticipating, and it wasn't budgeted for the service. And then, when they did the service, they discovered a, we had a broken, like, cotter pin at the tip of the aerial, which made it unsafe to work from, which is a problem. So we, we took care of that, and that, that maintenance cost became, you know, something that I couldn't, like I said, I attempted to, but couldn't, you know, strangled a budget in all the places I thought I could to, you know, account for that expense. The other is...
Aaron, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So is that ongoing, or is that, that, it was a scheduled maintenance service in addition to finding a problem, and notice you, we will occur that going forward, too?
Yes, so the servicing, the annual servicing that'll be done from now on, that's a part of the OSHA requirements, like, that, that's been budgeted for, it's taken care of. The additional cost of the, you know, malfunctioning aerial tip was pretty expensive.
Yeah, I just wondered if that would be under warranty, though, because engine one's only about a year and a half old, isn't it?
Unfortunately, it's not.
Is it really more than that?
Yeah, and it was us that broke it, so, yeah. It wasn't a engineering defect or anything. If it would have been, we would have definitely held it feet to the fire, so. We had a couple issues, and the company has been much more responsive and taken care of everything. So we did, you know, do a lot of verification and make sure that it wasn't a fact, so it was something that we actually damaged during training. The other piece is the grant-funded position, and the reason for that is it'll be reimbursed, but typically, the government doesn't pay us very fast. I turn in a request, and they can take up to thirty to sixty days before they release the fund, so the position's being funded, but whenever I turn in a request for payment or reimbursement, which is, I can do it, you know, ahead of time, but it's a little more of a headache. Whereas, when the pay period comes, I turn in the record of payroll, turn in the hours worked, and they just reimburse us for it. They want everything but your firstborn child if you ask them for prepay, so administratively, it makes it a lot more seamless to just ask for the reimbursement. And after tracking the reimbursements over the course of, you know, the first quarter of this, of this grant, and doing my first report to the government, I'm just noticing and following up with Heidi about how long typically the revenue takes, and I didn't want to put us in a position where we, you know, were overdraft or I was over budget, and we couldn't reconcile the books at the end, so this would alleviate that, or take care of it.
Will the grant at least pay that in retro? Like, why don't we just pull a note for that or something? Like, why would we actually do a transfer, and then what happens when the money comes back? Does it transfer back in? You know what I mean?
Well, it's going to be a one-month-old grant for, oh, a couple of years.
We got two more years.
So, to issue a note for five thousand dollars.
Just for like...
It's one month that we're fronting.
But they will reimburse that five grand, and the five grand is going back in.
Every month, we're getting about the five thousand, but we're behind a month.
It's basically working capital.
We need to fund it once, and then it'll cover it going forward. Okay.
We'll get a coup at the end of two years when we don't have it.
Let me ask you a question, Sharon, and I guess Chief Kenny as well. Just the timing of this being so close to year-end, and I know we're going to be going through year-end transfers on July eleventh, and as your email stated, I mean, we're very close, and I worry about spending anything out of the reserve fund if it can wait until July, so then we can look at it all together at the same time. Are these critical to be done this month, or can they kind of be grouped with all the year-end transfer items?
Go ahead.
Yeah, we could do that.
I just, I don't want to, I don't want to reduce the reserve fund by sixteen thousand dollars this month, and then next month find out, you know, we've got, I think we're going to be okay, but at the same time, I don't want to give preference to one, I mean, sorry, I don't want to give preference to one person.
Okay.
We've got to look at a lot of year-end transfers next month.
We did.
We did, all right.
We did.
It was a hundred and eighty-five.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Well, since it looks like we're going to defer this, I did want to indicate that I thought these were good requests, that they needed to be done, made sense. If you have a grant, and you're going to get reimbursed later, you do have to take care of the officer, make sure that they get paid. So in this discussion about putting it off to group it all together, it's not, at least on my part, I'm going to support that, but it's not because I have any questions about what you're doing.
Oh, I agree, I'm in the same way, like, I'm not questioning him, I just hate to look at it individually when we have a lot that we're going to be looking at within a month. But I think they are good. I agree with you, Paul. I think these make sense, it's just hard to look at them outside, outside of everybody else that we're going to have to look at within a month.
I'm assuming the ladder cart's been repaired, and this is just paying for the invoice.
Yeah, yeah, it's all, I mean, it's been taken care of.
Nice.
Big point, it's an expensive cotter pin.
Yes, yes.
There was other mechanisms, it's difficult to explain, because I remember when the engineer was here, that showed it to me, and I'm like, we have what they call a pinwheel waterway, so that you can use the tip right over the work and not damage your waterway, which is a big expensive nozzle underneath, and somewhere in the engineering of that, there's, you know, something in that was broken. We were already able to pin the waterway in the areas we wanted to, and there was a deficiency in one of the rungs. Dealt with that, so when he said it was an issue, and that, you know, we didn't want the waterway flying off, we had a fire, so I said, we'll take care of it.
Well, I got stacks and stacks of cotter pins at my barn. How do you want to come by? Leave fifteen thousand, take a cotter pin.
All right, well, thanks for coming in, sorry.
I do have, I just, I am scheduled to be out of town at a basketball tournament on the 11th with my daughter.
Well, I think you've explained what your items are, so I don't think you're gonna necessarily have to be here that night. Especially, you've told us tonight what they are, so we'll just remember them on tomorrow. And we'll explain them to advisory, 'cause advisory will be here that night too, that has to...
And plus a basketball tournament is clearly a higher priority.
It is.
Well, does advisory have another meeting before the 11th? Or are they not having, I don't think they're having any before then?
The 11th is...
Okay.
Not satisfied with the request.
Yeah. Yeah. Well presented, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erin.
All right, let's get back to the agenda. Maybe we'll talk about the library borrowing, Heidi?
Good evening, Heidi Doyle, Town Treasurer. Back again to firm up the library borrowing. So, last session, we decided to go ahead with the GAN, the Grant Anticipation Note. I have since met with our financial advisors and they did say we did have to keep that separate from our short-term borrowing, the bands, the borrowing anticipation notes. So, we are gonna be going ahead for July and issuing, it was seven hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars roughly on, for that last grant anticipation note, and we'll go ahead and get that for July, which will help with the cash flow on the remainder of the project in the next, this next month or two. The next amount that we'll need to do is more money for the completion and the number that has come back after the library trustees have met is two million forty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-two, as additional cost. That is not including, that's, the GAN is in addition on top of that. So, the amount that I'm looking for then for an August borrowing will be for this two million dollar amount. And that's the amount I'd like to put forward tonight. I will be back in September for reissuing our current ban and adding our capital equipment at that time. So, the stages right now are three months of borrowing, we have to wait fifteen days in between each issue. And the goal is that the August ones for the library, I will be putting on out for September, so we'll do thirteen month on it, to line up for the next year that they can all go for a long-term bond for whatever portion we decide at that point.
So, I heard on the radio that the Federal Reserve is thinking of dropping interest rates and they were projecting that it wouldn't be at this Federal Reserve meeting, but will be at the next Federal Reserve meeting. I don't know how often they meet, but it would make sense if interest rates are dropping to do these borrowings after the drop in the interest rate, 'cause if it goes down a quarter of a point, that might provide some benefit to the...
It would, as long as we have the cash flow and we can only wait so much. I mean, the September one, our rollover, we're stuck with September 12th rolling over that amount. The library one, we may have a little bit of wiggle room, but because I have that September 12th deadline, I have to do it before August 28th or I'll have to wait till after September. So, I'm stuck with that fifteen-day parameter of the issues. So, I'm hoping maybe if they meet, the grant anticipation note, I do think we have to do in July and that, again, is a short-term one and I think the quarter percent over the one year is probably...
The rates they reported us were pretty low, too.
The rates they were quoting us were in the twos.
Yeah, low twos.
Yeah.
And the grant anticipation note, I mean, 'cause ultimately that interest is gonna, it's not, you know...
It's not gonna be a huge amount, I think a quarter point on it is probably a couple hundred dollars on that one.
I wanna have the transaction costs for the town pretty low.
Right, we had looked at trying to consolidate some of these and to, it was gonna be about sixteen thousand dollars for issuance costs, 'cause it was full disclosure, because we're over three million dollars. So, by breaking them up, we bring it back down to the five hundred and fifty dollar issuance apiece. So, it seemed cost-effective to go with the three right now.
Let me ask a question, Mary? The two million, that's what we talked about back in that meeting in November, December, right?
It's consistent with what we presented.
That's, that's what I wanted to just point out. And just, we're talking about borrowing two million dollars and we're doing it short-term because we do, I just wanna point out to everybody, as we all know, like, we're hoping to recover a portion of this at some point from either additional fundraising or through litigation. The two million's not going long-term with the town now, it's a short-term bond to get the construction completed and then we go from there.
And one addition to that, as you see at the top there, is that the two million isn't all additional cost right now, includes two hundred...
Of contingency.
So, that also wouldn't be expended if, it's anticipated that we'll probably need it, but...
We wanna have the money available if needed.
If that's covering legal costs, not, it's not just construction, that's covering legal costs, right? Some of that is related to the recovery in the future, so we have to do it, so it's, and one thing to note, if you didn't read all the footnotes, this ten million eight forty that's in here spent today, that includes three hundred thousand, that really is attributable to this building. So, so, so this project has all the costs in it, including, remember we combined it to generator project.
Right, generators.
We approved, and I forget which year, I think fiscal year sixteen, some money, not really enough for a generator for this building to replace in kind the one we had. So, there are some costs in the library construction budget that technically aren't due to the library.
But once we did the reestimate in December, we kind of just merged everything together, so...
It's a cost of it. It's a cost of the town, and it's all...
But it technically isn't, you know, affiliated with the library.
With the additional costs, I was running the numbers pretty quickly, that town's portion with, before any potential recoveries is still about twenty-eight percent. State funding is about a third, thirty-three, thirty-four percent. And the donors are about thirty-seven percent. So, it's...
Well, those three legs are starting to even out a little more.
Originally, the town's contribution was about thirteen percent.
Yeah, thirteen or fourteen, yep, that's right.
Yep. Well, I think, I mean, I think this is necessary, I think we wanna make sure we have the money available, 'cause the last thing we need is a holdup on the library project, because we don't have the money for it, rather than, we have enough holdups as it is, so that's, I think we need to get this, get this done.
The only thing I would add is that if there is any update in terms of the project or the progress of the project, obviously we would let Heidi know as soon as we know anything. It sounds like August 28th is the drop date for you in terms of...
Well, in actual, it's earlier than that, because, but that's the date where they cannot sign and I can't go for, I can't go for the...
So, we'll just keep her informed as things progress.
Yeah, I think we need to move on it, so. So, I would move to approve the bonding of two million forty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars in regular bonding and then a ban note for seven hundred and twenty-six thousand seventy...
We're not gonna approve that one.
That's right, we did the ban already at the last meeting.
And it's not a reg, right.
So, it's just the...
It's not a regular bond, it's a ban for the two hu, two million.
It's just...
Oh, it isn't?
It's not a long-term bond, we're just doing a ban for thirteen months.
Great, then I would, let me withdraw that motion and move to approve a ban for two million forty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars for the library construction project.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Good question, though, the long-term bond, that gets wrapped up in park project completion, correct? Or do you, if you actually do it at a certain point, you've gone too long? Like, if the project goes, I know when, when we've done it in another community, it's easier project completion, but if the project went and's going multi-years, are you required to kind of like do maybe a partial?
You can do a partial, I was talking with our financial advisor, you know, they suggested we might want a long-term bond, another million of it, or depending on where it is, to take advantage of the rates right now.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
But I don't think we have, I don't think we can really do a full project bond until we have a number. And we might not have that number for a while, so I'm suggesting we're probably gonna do a long-term bond with a portion of this and then do a ban for the remaining portions till the timing settles out on what the numbers are.
If we do a, well, we can talk about get there, but if we do a long-term bond, you know, let's say recovering some losses, is that just goes back in the general fund now?
Does, yes, it does. I mean, you could retire if there's sufficient, you want to retire.
Theoretically, bond more than what it actually costs, is what I'm trying to say.
Yes, I do, but you probably wouldn't want to retire the bond.
Well, I think the problem we're gonna have is, is you have to take this to legal counsel and they're gonna look into, are there pending lawsuits, anything going on in litigation? They may not approve that whole divert amount in a bond in their letter. So, I think that, but we're already gonna have, you know, two point five million in capital equipment of the town already to look towards putting into a bond. So, anything else added from the library, I would say, a million's probably a very safe number, that we know that number will be in there.
Right. And I'm pretty sure this project is keeping counsel busy on many different facets.
Right, and there's probably more capital from next year that might get added into this as well. So, I think we have enough amassed to go for a long-term bond of something.
If I could just interject here, you don't wanna be in, the town Sherburne doesn't wanna be in a position of borrowing money to pay lawyers to pursue litigation. That's not a capital project. That really has to be treated differently than the capital project. There are some legal fees that can be part of the capital project, but just the way that I heard those words fly by, about paying lawyers to sue people, you can't go to the bond market and borrow that kind of money to sue people and treat it as a capital expenditure.
Right. Right, and that is why I think we'd only be borrowing a portion of that amount of money. I think it's too early to say where, what financial position we're in with the library.
All right, thank you, Heidi. It's eight o'clock, so we're gonna start the dangerous dog hearing. Perfect timing. So, I have to read this, the public hearing, we're gonna, we're starting, opening a public hearing to consider a complaint submitted pursuant to general law, chapter 140, subchapter 157A, that a dog known as Brewster, which is owned on, owned or kept at 145 Forest Street in the town Sherburne, is a dangerous dog or nuisance dog as those terms are defined in general law, chapter 140, subchapter 136A. The select board may make such findings in order concerning, concerning the restraint or disposal of said dog as may be deemed necessary. Officer Teszler?
Do you just want me to go through the report and kind of summarize what's going on as I have your test?
So, before you begin, George, I recommend on these types of hearings that everybody be put under oath.
Okay.
Because the statute says that people should be examined under oath, so it's good to follow the statute.
All right, go ahead, I don't know, what do you, I don't know how to put some, I don't know.
Well, so you raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so hope you got it.
Yes.
Thanks.
This morning.
Okay, on Tuesday, April 30th, 2019, I responded to 145 Forest Street for a report of a dog that had been injured a delivery person at the home. I spoke with the resident's assistant and was advised that the resident was not home at the time. I later spoke with the resident and dog owner via phone. She said she was inside the home at the time of the bite and heard the beeping of the delivery truck. She said at some point, the dog pushed the door open and ran out of the house as a delivery driver approached the front of the home. She did indicate that drivers usually go to the side of the home at this point, or, excuse me, in this circumstance. The delivery driver approached the front door. She said she was inside the home working, she saw the dog bite the delivery person. The resident said that she thought the wounds were not deparable wounds, also said the wounds were not broken skin and bleeding gashes. I subsequently spoke with the victim via phone. He told me he had been bitten several times. He was currently at St. Vincent's Hospital in Worcester being treated for the dog bites. He told me that as he walked up to the driveway at approximately 11:45, there were two dogs barking in the yard. He said as he attempted to deliver a package, one of the dogs started biting his leg and tore his pants apart. He said he was bitten two times in the right leg, three times on the left leg, and that his calf was messed up. I requested he provide photographs and documentation for the bite, which he later did, and I provided, involved the animal inspector via phone and let her know what happened. I'm not sure what her interaction was. But it appears that this dog was involved with another bite or scratch on July 5th of 2019 involving...
That has to be, you mean 2018?
Probably eighteen, isn't it, that type of?
Yep, I'm not, yes, seven, five, 2018. You know what, I think it was 2017, 'cause the incident number is seventeen, so it would have been 2017. So, prior bite involving the dog on April 3rd, 2017, and then a possible scratch bite was reported in July of seventeen.
I didn't note in here, did you know the age of the dog? ballpark, or did I miss it in turn?
I don't know that I indicated the age of the dog, I don't remember the age of the dog. It was fairly young, I wanna say it was, I'm not sure exactly.
Yeah, okay.
So, can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, please.
So, first, there's a group of photographs that are in the packet for the select committee. Are these, can you identify these photographs?
Those are the photographs that were provided to me by the victim of his injuries.
And the dog Brewster, there apparently were two dogs that had come out to greet the delivery man. Are we clear that it's the dog Brewster who did the bites as opposed to the other dog?
I'm clear in the sense that the resident and dog owner told me she saw Brewster bite the delivery person. The delivery person didn't know which dog was which, but she told me that Brewster was the dog that bit the delivery person as she watched it happen.
And your, your testimony about the prior incidents in 2017, which dog was involved in that incident? Was that the same Brewster as was involved in the current incident?
Yeah, the information I have is that a prior bite involving Brewster in a delivery person was reported to us on April 30th, 2017. So, we were advised of at least one prior bite with him. And then an additional possible scratch invite, I don't, I wasn't able to bring up the prior call, prior report for this evening's hearing, but my memory serves me that two dogs approached, the person was bitten by, I believe, a second dog that wasn't involved in this bite at the time, and Brewster was also involved. So, I think there were two dogs, one of which is no longer with the family. They still have two dogs, I think they got a new dog. So, they had Brewster at the time of the other one, which was a scratch and a bite. So, the person was bitten another time by a dog that is no longer owned by the family, I believe, and Brewster was involved in that, but to which extent, I'm not sure. It was explained to me that it was a possible scratch or bite by Brewster.
See, and that's why your report referred to it as a possible.
Right.
And was Brewster here before this board in the past?
Was another dog who was here? That was here with...
Was another dog? With the same owner, I mean, the dog that she no longer has is the one that bit with the possible bite from Brewster that time? So, I think one of her other dogs bit someone and she got rid of that dog, got another dog that was involved in this in the sense that it was there, but it didn't bite the delivery person the other day or on April 30th.
So, this is the first time that we're hearing, doing a hearing on the dog Brewster?
Correct, but the second or possibly third bite.
And it's, but it's the second time we're having a hearing with regard to this owner?
Correct.
Thank you for clarifying. And Diane, you contacted the owner?
I, well, I sent her a letter and asked her if she could please attend to tonight's hearing. I sent it by regular mail and certified, but I never heard from her. I don't believe she came to the hearing either in 2017.
So, are dogs routinely kept outside, like, in a, like, how'd it get to the delivery man? Does she open a door, dogs go out, are they, they stay outside, on a chain, on a fence?
It sounds like the dog is mostly kept inside, however, they do have time to run outside. In this particular instance, I was told that the dog essentially, the door may have been cracked and the dog pushed the door open or squeezed its way through the door to get to the delivery person and bite him.
Sergeant Teszler, you may not know this, do you know whether or not the sheens have
paid for either the medical costs or the damaged clothing with Mr. Brickoff?
I do not know.
Yeah. Bye. Do you have, I was gonna say, do you have a recommendation as to...
I don't get into recommendations, I kind of just present the information and that's essentially your role to make the recommendations. I do find it problematic that the same owner is, you know, being brought up for two different dog hearings with different dogs, so it's concerning to us that if we go to the front door for a call, or firefighter goes to the front door for a call, or a child solicits Girl Scout cookies at the front door, that something can, if it's happening to delivery people, that we've been notified of, it could certainly happen to other people.
The Massburg guy that's going around right now?
Massburg.
My question, what's the breed of the dog? Is it easy to ask?
It's a mix.
It's a mix, okay.
So, I guess, let me ask the board, just 'cause I think this is only the second dog hearing that I've ever since I've been on the board. What kind of recommendations can, or what can we do as a board? Can we require the owner... Can we require the owner to restrain the dog, or I guess?
Before you get there, you first need to see if there's anybody who wants to be heard on this thing.
Oh, right.
It says a.
It is a public hearing, I guess. Is there any other comments from the public?
Even though the dog owner may not be here, she may have sent somebody, even though we know everybody presents.
Everybody.
For purposes of our.
Thank you, thank you. Right. But it appears no one is here in the public to speak.
All right, so there's a two-step process that we have to follow. Before you get to what remedy you should do, you first have to make a determination as to whether this is a nuisance dog or a dangerous dog. And I happen to know those definitions, but it'd be better if we ask the animal. I'm not sure what title you have with regard to the animal control function.
The animal control officer, correct? Animal control officer.
The animal control officer to describe the differences between a nuisance dog and a dangerous dog. And then we should bring that issue back here for deliberation.
Right.
After we determine what category of dog it is, then there are remedies that are specified by statute.
Okay.
So a nuisance dog would essentially be a dog that's routinely in traffic, constantly barking, bothering neighbors, et cetera. Something that I would describe as non-dangerous. And a dangerous dog would be a dog that is essentially out of control, has bitten several people. That's kind of a summary of the two different classifications, whether it's a dangerous, deemed dangerous or deemed nuisance.
I do another question. In your opinion, what was kind of the attitude or demeanor of the dog owner? See, I see here, I know we, some of the records are, you know, can't be found, or, but we have potentially up to three bites. It's unknown if it's the same dog or not. So do we have a dangerous dog or a dangerous dog owner? It's kind of one of the things I'm thinking, do you know what I mean? Did they seem apologetic and yes, we'll fix this, or a bit nonchalant and, you know, disinterested in the problem?
I would say both. She seemed to indicate that she was concerned about it, but having her not show up at either hearing, I think is, is kind of an issue in the sense.
Is this about Brewster?
Yes, this is the dog.
Yes, I'm here representing the family. Sorry, I went to the wrong room.
Oh, thank you. So we will give you a chance to talk a second. So finish, go ahead, finish what you.
That was essentially my comment.
Great, would you like to speak?
Yes, I work for the family and I just wanted to.
Oh, you want to come up, can you come up to the microphone? Identify yourself and then.
Oh, sure.
That's where we're in too.
Oh, yeah. And could you raise your.
Oh, okay.
While we do that for a minute.
Sure, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
So help you God?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead, this is Ms. Moore.
Thank you.
So sorry, I went to the wrong room. My name is Carrie Schaefer. I work for the Sheen family. I was not there when the incident happened, but I just wanted to give you an update as to what we've been working on since this happened. Liz is out of town, so that's why I'm here today. Since the incident happened, Brewster now wears a muzzle when he's in the yard. They set up a, a package delivery box as soon as you enter onto the property, so all packages can be delivered right as soon as you get onto the property. They don't even have to come up to the house. We're looking at behavioral classes for him right now. I've spoken to three different behavioralists, and we're trying to find the right one to work with. Unfortunately, their schedules are very packed, so we're trying to see who we can get to work with us as quickly as possible. And I think, I think that might be all my updates. Let me just check real quick.
I'd ask the question about whether or not the Sheins had paid for either the medical costs or the damaged clothing to the delivery man?
I do not know. I wasn't at the house when the incident happened, so I really, I know nothing about what's happened since then.
So I have two questions. One is, there's a reference in the police report to the dog being able to push the door open and get out. And I'm wondering if you can shed any light on how a dog can push a door open and get out?
Not to my knowledge. They're, they're in the house, and it's, there's a side door and there's a front door, but they lock fully. So I don't know how that would happen.
So there isn't a dog door, if you will?
No, there's not a dog door, no.
All right, and the other question is, when they're outside the house, is there a confined area for them?
There is an electric fence, and it was my understanding that this delivery person went to the wrong area, which was not within the, or was outside the, how do I explain that?
It was inside the electric.
Right, exactly. They're supposed to deliver on the backside of the garage, which is not even attached to the house. It's a separate building. And it's my understanding that this delivery man came to the front door. And then that's what set the dog off because it was, he was, it just frightened him.
How do delivery people know where to go?
It's in the instructions.
In the delivery instructions?
Right, yeah. Yeah, like anything that she orders, it says, but now it's actually changed to, like, when you, as soon as you come on the property, the drop box is right there, and there's a big sign that says, please put all packages in this box. And then there's also a sign that says there are dogs on the property too.
What would happen if a police officer needed to come to the house, or a fireman, or somebody needed a signature for a package?
Well, I was actually at the house, I think, when, when you came. I think it would depend on where, because sometimes the dogs are in the garage area, which is a separate building. And then sometimes they're in the house. So when I've been there and people come to the door, I make sure the dogs are contained in an area, and then I answer the door.
So what happens if a Girl Scout comes dancing up to the front door?
Or a Boy Scout selling Christmas wreaths.
Or a Boy Scout selling Christmas wreaths.
It would be the same thing. Like I would, if I was there, I know what I do. I contain them and then I answer the door.
But that's inside the electric fence?
Yes.
And of course, a politician looking for signatures on something.
Right, right.
He or she takes his life in this.
Well, and now, like I said, there is a sign, like as soon as you enter the property, there, there's the drop box, and then there's a sign, please drop all packages. And then there's another sign saying, there are dogs on the property, please beware. So there, she's gone through a lot, like since this happened, she's been taking a lot of precaution steps to address this issue.
But the, the sign that says drop the packages here doesn't tell a Girl Scout not to go knock on the door to try and sell.
Right, but it does say beware, there are dogs on the property. A separate sign. And, oh, just one other comment. We did, the animal control person came to the house, and she did do the quarantine, I believe, for ten days as well. Yeah, and that was my last comment.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. You, you mentioned something about a muzzle, but I didn't really understand how, when it was used.
That was, that was part of the, when the animal control person came out, she's like, if the dog is out on the property, he has to have a muzzle on. So we went and got two soft muzzles for him. So whenever he's outside now, he has a muzzle that he wears.
So if he's out deliberately, that is with the owners, or you're deliberately putting him outside to put a muzzle on? But if he's able to push doors open, which is what the report was here, he's not gonna be muzzled?
I don't, I don't understand that, because it, it's a front, a really heavy front door and a really heavy side door. So I don't know, I don't know how he would have pushed.
That's what I was told, that from.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know that.
If you somehow opened the door to get outside.
Yeah, I don't know that, that to be true.
Go ahead, Eric.
No, I think I've asked everything. I'm ready to test my right.
We have no other questions than Vic Ward?
Yeah, and I can, for the benefit of the board, I pulled up the definition from Mass General Law, section one thirty-six. I, I think the one that's applicable is dangerous dog, which is defined as a dog that either, Romanate I, without justification, attacks a person or domestic animal, causing physical injury or death, or Romanate II, behaves in a manner that a reasonable person would believe poses an unjustified imminent threat of physical injury or death to a person or to a domestic or owned animal. Nuisance is, Sergeant Tettson described.
Barking dog or.
Barking in traffic, right?
So Paul, you said first we need to determine, is the dog a nuisance dog, or is the dog a dangerous dog? And from there.
Commotion, or maybe the other.
From there, then we would determine recommendations?
Yes.
I would move that the board make a determination that based not only on this incident, the prior incident reported to the Sherburne Police Department on March, I'm sorry, April third, two thousand seventeen, that Brewster would be identified, declared, labeled, considered a dangerous dog pursuant to Mass General laws?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor? All right, so now that we've declared Brewster a dangerous dog, Paul, can you explain to us what the next step is?
All right, on remedies, there are some things that you can't do. One of the reasons why the state enacted these laws was to try and end the practice of banning dogs from towns. So if you had a dangerous dog in one community, it was often the practice to say, you have to remove the dog from this town, and that just inflicted some other town. So we can't, we can't banish the dog from the town. We can do a variety of things, the most extreme of which is to order the dog to be put down. And then a whole series of things like muzzling, confined areas. And again, there are some things you can't do. You can't have the dog tied up to a tree outside for long periods of time, which is considered cruelty. And the philosophy behind these changes are that the dog is being punished sometimes for the conduct of the owner. And it's unfair to have the dog bear cruel treatment because the owner is not doing the owner's job.
Go ahead, do you have more?
No.
I was just gonna say, I think what we probably want to do here, I, I, just my thought on it, is that we would want to put in restrictions that the dog has to be restrained at all times, or confined.
When it's outside the house? I would say the electric fence is not.
Not enough.
Not enough.
For a dog, for a dangerous dog.
Yeah, well, I know even for my cows that aren't dangerous, they get zapped and then they go through it.
Zapped.
And being zapped, after you get zapped a few times and you realize, even the cows with their.
Not gonna kill you.
High IQ can figure out, okay, they, there's a momentary discomfort, but then they're free, so.
I, I think the confinement needs to be defined as.
I would, I would propose being unleashed.
Unleashed or.
Under control.
Under.
Yeah, the word for it, isn't there a word for, Sergeant?
Yeah.
When you had that leash or control, there's words, specific words you had for being under control, I think, when you had that Warren article last year, didn't you?
Yeah, there's still, I don't think that's been adopted, the Warren article.
Okay.
So that's a separate entity. But I can run through kind of some generic.
That would be great.
Lists, items if you want.
Mm-hmm.
So a dog must be humanely restrained is one option, and it can be one or all of these. Confined to the premises of the owner or keeper, securely confined indoors, in a securely enclosed or locked pen or run with under proper construction, and the kennel must be installed within thirty days. When removed from the owner or keeper's premises, dog must be humanely muzzled and restrained with a three-foot leash capable of three hundred pounds. Proof of insurance not less than one hundred thousand dollars. Owner or keeper must provide information for dog identification such as a microchip, so the dog must be registered so that someone is aware that the dog has been out of scan. And number five would be spayed or neutered unless deemed unfit by a veterinarian. So those are.
The first one, could you read that first one again?
Dog must be humanely restrained.
Yeah, or the next one, actually.
Dog must be confined, confined to the premises of the owner or keeper. Under that there's A, B, and C. So A would be securely confined indoors. B would be in a securely enclosed and locked pen or run of proper construction, and the kennel must be installed within thirty days. Or C would be, when removed from the owner or keeper's premises, dog must be humanely muzzled and restrained with a leash of three feet capable of three hundred pounds.
And the issue of construction of these pens, it's been explained to me in other dog hearings in other towns, that that's a foot underground. That is, you have metal that goes a foot underground and has to be high enough so that the dog cannot leap over it. Usually that's six feet or more.
I don't think we, I wouldn't, personally, I wouldn't recommend that. It would be more the. It needs to be confined and, and if it's, it's not on the owner's premises, then it needs to be muzzled in the leash of no le, no more than, what was it, six feet and three feet?
Three feet.
Yeah, I think, I think that's an important one.
You know what I would like to recommend, and you can tell me, Paul, if we're allowed to do this. What I would like to recommend is we send Kim Morrow back, maybe three months or six months from now, to almost do a house visit. She's our, that's her favorite.
The animal control, right.
Control person to assess the situation, because it seems like she has, unfortunately, she's not here tonight. It seems like she could assess the behavior of the dog also, and so.
And I.
And she did recommend to, to seek out a behavioralist, so.
And she could validate the classes perhaps if they had, so I would like.
Absolutely.
I'd also recommend that Kim do a follow-up, maybe two visits, maybe six months and twelve months, or whatever the right period of time is, to assess the situation, in addition to some of the other things we can consider.
I think, I think that's, that's important, that we have her follow-up. What, do you think six and twelve make sense?
That sounds totally reasonable, sure.
And then in the meantime, the behavioral classes and the confined to the property.
And muzzling.
And muzzling and a three-foot leash, three hundred pounds.
When you say confined to the property, are you talking the pen type thing, or the indoors?
Not the pen.
Okay, not the pen, dig down. And the muzzle.
I don't think we need to require them to build the.
Whenever outside the house? Yes, like inside the house, what have you? I was actually looking at the aerial of the house, and I could see anyone going to the front door or the side door. You know what I mean? I don't think that's a solution. If anyone goes to that front door right there, they're just.
So that, what about insurance?
I go, if I've never been to a house before, I go to the front door.
It's very reasonable that any, I know this is things with private property, but unless you gate your, unless you gate your driveway, any reasonable person can come to a front door.
So are we saying, in addition to them being muzzled when they're outside, that the dog has to be on the leash the entire time they're outside? Or are we not saying that?
Yeah, I am, I'm suggesting that at least. I mean, it's a two-bite dog, you know what I mean? It's like, you know, bite, bite three, might be the last bite, you know?
Yeah, so, so I think that's a good step. I just want to show us what.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I agree with the dog.
What about insurance? You want to require insurance?
What do you think?
Well, I'm troubled that, that none of the medical bills were paid, for at least.
We don't know.
We don't know.
I don't know, but that's.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
He said the medical, medical bills for the driver were those paid, and we don't know.
Uh, yeah, I don't.
We don't, we don't know. I suspect they already have an umbrella policy, and they probably, I, I think it's a good thing to include.
Yes.
I bet it already exists, but if it doesn't, they should have insurance policy, at least a hundred thousand dollars.
If I may, just regarding the insurance, it's not something that the boy can require. It's something that the law states you can recommend, so you can't require, but.
We can recommend it, okay.
Thank you.
I think last year we may have. We may have, we may have required it. I guess it was a strong recommendation, Sergeant, yeah.
So I guess I'll move that we put the, I guess, what is it, the restrictions on the dog, that it must be confined to the property indoors, and when outdoors, be muzzled, have a three-foot leash.
I, I go back on the, we confined to property, they just told us they want to take it to classes, so there should be times when it's not.
Well, it can be because it'll be muzzled with, with a leash, you can take it off the property.
Yeah.
I'm saying when it's confined indoors unless it has the muzzle and the leash.
Yeah.
I mean, technically it might be unmuzzled when they're training it, whatever, but if I, it's basically at the point where it's just, has to be zero risk of biting anyway.
Yeah. And we. And we rec, and we recommend an insurance of at least a hundred thousand, liability insurance of at least a hundred thousand.
I believe she does have that, but I, I'll have to check, yeah.
I'm positive, I mean, just based on basic liability policy on most homes, we would have that.
And the Kim Morrow follow-up.
My, my umbrella policy includes it, so I bet it's.
Yeah.
I bet it's already there, but.
And the Kim Morrow follow-up.
And the follow, yes, and also we recommend a follow-up with the animal inspector in six months and in twelve months. And can you, will you do follow-up, who follows up with her, would, would you, Diane, or?
I'll follow up.
Just tell Kim to follow up with the board after she does.
I'll touch base with the board at health on Monday and tell them.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
So under discussion, I, I think we all, I'm a dog owner, and I think many people in town are dog owners, and we all love our dogs. But we have to provide for the public safety, we have to make sure that visitors, residents, delivery drivers are safe in insurance, so that we have to take these measures. We take no joy in doing this, we have to take these measures, and I, I very much hope that the property owner, the dog owner hears the message, this is the second time that she has been an issue before this board with regard to dogs. We're trying to send a message that we must protect other people, and she must protect other people from injuries from her dog. So please convey that to her.
I will, definitely.
All right, with that, uh, all those in favor? Thank you, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant.
So we had an electric fence for one of our dogs, she would jump like a deer over it, take the zap, and then would sit at the end of the driveway, because she wouldn't take the zap coming back in.
My, 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 she's decided to use the electric fence every now and then, in some cases.
Well, she just likes to go visit Debbie tomorrow, who lives on the back there, because then if he gives her treats, so.
I told you about when I worked with it, I had a UPS driver took the liking to their dog, he would come every morning, the dog would ride with him all day around town in his truck, he had dog treats, he would walk it, and every night before he went back to turn the truck in, he would drop the dog off at the house.
That'd be annoying.
Yeah, that's doggy daycare, that, people pay money for that.
Yeah, but he had no, he's alone in the truck, he had no companionship, so he had a dog.
Moving on, we, I think we only have one other item on our regular, and then we have selectmen's reports, but number four was the consideration of annual appointments to various boards and committees. We have a list here, it looks like there's no, I mean, it's.
There's no contest.
There's no contest, and there's.
So can I move a quote?
I just wanna have a little bit of discussion about this, though, I wanted to say, I'm a little, unfortunate, I know there's limited resources in town for people to volunteer. I wish we could have some discussion about the constitution of some of these boards, so they're not, we could have a mix of some, but we talked about it last year with the Conservation Commission, that it would be great to have an engineer on the Conservation Commission. It would be great to have a little bit of a mix of people on some of these boards, where when we continually reappoint the same people, because there are only choices, it's not, we're not potentially putting the best people on all the boards. I just, I just wanna put the message out that we'd love to see more volunteers to come forward to serve on these committees, and we do thank the people who have volunteered for these, I don't wanna get, take that the wrong way, but it would be nice to have some decisions on those as well.
Yeah, I think it's also, just like this board and the expansion of the Board of Health, I think it is good to have a cross-section of opinions and skill sets, particularly in some of the boards that have approval and input on development projects, because there's a wide range of views. So I think it's important going forward, when we can, to have as broad a representative membership as we can.
I agree.
Particularly for these boards. I don't think it's a good idea to have one person on three different boards that weigh in on development projects, I just don't think that's good policy, so.
So my two senses, that I'm, I'm very grateful for every one of these people who have put in years of service for the community. These are renewals, some of which are three-year terms, most of which are three-year terms. Three years is a long commitment for a volunteer, there's no pay, and frequently in municipal service, no good deed goes unpunished. So, very few times do people thank, express gratitude for the service that we receive. So at least today, I wanna express gratitude on behalf of all the citizens of the town, for all these people who've come forward and make this government work on all these committees.
You know, one of the things I've been really pleased that we've done in the last few years is recognize long-term service and awards to people. We had a minor version of that for Mike, Joe, when he stepped down, but it, it, it's a great point, Paul, this town, our tax rate and our quality decisions wouldn't be as good as they are without the input of all these volunteers, I'm constantly amazed when you look at some of these boards, at the expertise that people bring, there's some very bright, capable people.
One other thing that is in the, under these, uh, it's not just the appointments, Diane, thank you for, we talked about this at the last meeting, and you provided all this information about the different committees that have been sunsetted, and then we also have a list of the committee appointed by the select, committees appointed by the select board. Are any of these committees, Diane, that you know of not active at the moment, or are they all meeting on a regular basis?
Well, I have to say that probably, we're trying to get the Disability Advisory Committee moving again, it's been kind of slow and stagnant, but we have a new member. Um, she's pushing to get meeting, though, so that's great.
This is a committee that I had worked long and hard to get established, we absolutely needed disability committee. The disabled are entitled to participate in all government affairs and all life activities, just like everybody else, and this committee helps promote that. It's, does require people coming forward, uh, again, this is all volunteers, unpaid, it's a lot of work. And many of the members themselves had some disability of one kind or another, which makes it difficult for them to participate in, in the committee meetings, so please, we have to have this committee. We need volunteers to come forward, it should be revived, it should not be sunsetted, is what I'm.
Yeah, no, I just, I just wanted to just look at this list so we could discuss it, the only one, the only other one on here that I'm not familiar with at all, the other ones, I've all heard the name before, I kinda know what they do. There's one, Southwest Area Planning Council, what is that?
That actually is just a one-person G O that goes on behalf of representative of the town.
It's a planning board.
Oh, okay, okay. I've just never heard of that.
Regional committee.
Yeah, I, I've served on it for a while, way back when I was on the planning board, it's not a Sherburne committee.
It's a, oh, it's a regional.
It's, it's created by metropolitan area.
I just didn't know what it was.
It's actually a very active committee, looking towards regionalization, like you, Paul, I served on it, the, oh, I had a question about the electronic voting committee. Is that one that can be sunsetted now, or?
Well, I don't know, we, we haven't come forward in the initial, we want.
I can, I can ask her.
Yeah, I mean, I just wonder if one that we, if, now that we've implemented it.
Right.
We probably could get rid of that.
Yeah, right, the energy committee, I don't think it has met in a while, but I'll touch base with G O and John Hill.
I wonder if that one, if we hire a sustainability coordinator, do we need an energy committee?
But outside of that, all the committees from what I can see here meet regularly.
The one I've never heard of was the Medical Reserve Corps Executive Committee.
That's, again, a state.
That's a state.
That's a state organization.
Right, like the M A P C and.
Exactly.
Right, right.
So that's more representative to, it's not an external.
Um, Diane, I know you, um, you had had trouble filling the Leland Farm trustee position, do you have somebody in that?
There's somebody on there, yeah.
Okay, good.
George, can I get a call?
Yes, please.
I just wanna comment that the, um, the new website that the town has, it's much, it's much more accessible to see what these committees are, and I noticed that some of them have a really nice mission statement associated with them, and it might be there that you can introduce words like, you know, this would be a great place for someone with an engineering background, or you know, to describe the kind of diversity that you're looking for on the board, I think some of them have verbs and some of them don't.
Well, I don't think the opportunity to have a mission statement.
Right, it might be nice to work on that.
We're the ones appointing, so we could say, when we're looking for people to fill these positions, these are the kind of positions that we, that would help fill out the board. Right, exactly, that's a good idea, Larry.
It's a, it's a nice element of looking at.
And then what were the two, we've talked about, then, I know Kim Chester's coming forward with a, with a.
She's gonna go forward on the script, the letter charge, yeah.
For, for a new committee for the litter, for litter control.
Letter control.
And then was there another one we talked about at the last meeting? There was something else.
I'm drawing a blank.
One, one thing I wondered, though, actually, is if you look at the press release, and there was, I'm wondering what vacancy, what, what committees have vacancies and or chronic vacancies. Yeah, I know, so I wonder if we should maybe have a, a future agenda to, to look at some of these and see if we have committees that are understaffed, maybe there's ways that we can help them recruit people, you know, I know it was, I'm worried about the gaps.
Yeah, maybe we could do a, a brief overview of what some of these committees do.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, sure.
Well, maybe I should stop bringing them, maybe I could stop bringing some of the committees in.
That might be a way to do a cover night or something. If we can help recruit people, it will help, um, cause what happens, what I've encountered is that, you know, if one of these committees is designed to have, say, five people, and they only have three, well, they're actually working hard, not only volunteer, but they're doing, five people's work by three people, so if you get one of, it might cause them not to leave, so.
Just a, is the Z, the Z V A?
Cause they're elected, right?
They're elected, yeah.
So the Z, I think, is just a type of.
I think that's the secret committee.
That's the secret committee.
That's, oh.
That's the secret, secret.
You haven't sworn me in yet.
Wait, I still think Z V A is.
Z V A?
They're not.
Z V A is one of us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That is probably. Ah, you're right, you're right.
The, uh.
Planning board.
Planning board and the, uh.
But they're not listed as.
And the other ones, like land acquisition committee, is not listed on here.
The Board of Appeals is the Z V A chapter.
That's not.
Oh, there it is.
That's the second line in it.
Yes, yes, it is.
That's why we say. The secret committee, we assume, is a typographical.
Like, like you said, the land acquisition committee.
So that's not fully by the selectman, but I think selectmen have two representatives, so it's made up of, um.
That's right.
Two from the selectmen, one from the moderator.
And we modified that a couple of years ago, but you're right, there's a.
So we appoint people, but it's not.
We appoint some people, uh, for a couple of the seats.
And I, and they have one from capital budget also, which I was.
And now Joe is, right?
Correct.
Yep. You just tell them.
Yeah.
Second, can I move to reappoint the list? People who have signed up for reappointment, that's contained.
In the attach sheet.
In our packet, yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of the list of appointments, um, in the packet? Say aye?
opposed.
All right, um, so those appointments, thank you to everyone who is volunteering, we really appreciate it, and if anybody out there knows of any other potential volunteers, we have a lot of vacancies, so. All right, I think we went through the, we already did the reserve fund transfer, and we saw your email from the other day. Do you have any other information to add, I know you're kind of winding up the year here, so.
Just watching it very closely, the other, I wanted to say, though, it, for the, uh, the management letter, for each one of the comments, I, you, you'll see that there's a response.
I did see that.
That was good.
That was helpful.
To show our progress, and I'm, I'm looking forward to a much better management letter next year.
Thank you.
That's the whole purpose of a management letter.
Yes, I know.
You don't want a, a, an account that just will give you, and I've seen it in the past, everything's fine, you know, all is well, all is well, and then suddenly you find yourself in a jam because something wasn't all well, it's much better. I really liked his presentation where he, he took the time to go through, explain all this, not just to us, but to the voters.
Yeah.
And on the management level, he indicated things that could be done better. Everybody can do things better.
That's part of continuous improvement. And, and when you pointed out as well, I mean, the management letter from the previous year, there are a number of items that were addressed, and that's, and so there's new items, and it's always gonna be that way.
Yeah, you want that, you want that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, we, I have a great relationship with, with their.
And I did see the implementation of a major software change that doesn't have. So this is, the V D A R installation is the basis for a lot of these issues, but yeah, that's, thank you for pointing.
Okay.
Do we have any selectman reports? All right, um, with that, then, I will to go into executive session, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to threat and potential litigation. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town, and the chair so declares, the library, uh, the chair does, um, declare, the select board will not return to public session. Any a second and a roll call vote?
Second.
Second by Mr. Waldron. Having a second, we will now have a roll call vote, Mr. Durensis.
Hi.
Mr. Yan.
Yes.
Mr. Waldron.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson, yes.
It's.
Mr. Morrow, aye.
Two.
Having passed by a vote of five to zero, the open session is now closed, and we will not be returning to open session, we are now in executive session.